People pay good money for that.
You're just jealous because I didn't help you.
I am. I am jealous. George, are we good to go?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we will count down. Five, four, three, two, one. Good evening. It is 7:01 PM on Monday, November 8th, 2021, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's board meeting live and in the boardroom are board members Crystal Brackey, Christine Malik, Allegra Smiesek, Peter Tensing, and Paula Cole. We are also joined by student representatives Corinna Jones, Helen Donbrock, and Elsie Cruz Parra. I am Board Chair Tim Paulus. We're joined at the table by Superintendent Janowski and also by Board Secretary Cassandra Quam. The Richfield Public Schools' mission statement is that we strive to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we'll strive to keep that focus at the center of our discussions this evening. Thanks to all of you for joining us here live and in the boardroom, or the legion of you watching by livestream, or later on YouTube. Thank you for being here. With that, we'll move to our first item of business this evening, and that's to approve the agenda before us.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
One second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any discussion? All right, I will vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. Excellent. Next up is information and proposals, non-action items. We'll move to the superintendent update.
All right, so two items in the superintendent update today. One presented by me, an update on Policy 601, Academic Standards and Instructional Curriculum, and one around community education and early childhood. And so I am welcoming to the microphone Carol McNaughton-Combers, Abby Dubay, and Dr. Latonya Daniels.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Janowski and pretty big board members.
Can I ask, are we sure the microphone is on? It does not appear to be.
Yes, green.
Definitely on.
Green is good. All right, how's that sound?
That's great, thank you.
All right, thank you Superintendent Janowski, and good evening, board members. I'm Carol McNaughton-Combers, the Director of Community Education, and we're happy to be with you to share this brief update on community education. I'm going to start out with the adult and broader community of our district-wide services, and then transition into our families and school-age youth, and then our preschool and early childhood programs. Go to the next slide. We connect with adults in our community in many ways. We were really happy to see here this year that our numbers post-pandemic are starting to come back. We are getting our class participation closer to where they were back in 2019. During the pandemic, definitely 2020 and then the first half of 2021, most of our adult programs were moved to live online sessions. You can see we had a really good number of participants in that format. And being a fee-based program, it's really important that we were able to continue having that participation by partnering with school districts across the state and joining together online, so that even with low numbers, classes were still being able to be held, people were supported and connected. You can see also some fall partnerships here that were in-person that were very successful as well, just locally in our buildings. And then you may recall, right at the beginning of 2020, we received a $10,000 arts grant to serve older adults and get more of our community involved. And after a bit of a delay this past summer of '21, we were able to offer some classes, have the older adults participating with creative expression and involvement, and we were able to reach nearly 2,500 people in their homes with a survey, also a resource packet, and just ask them, you know, what is their interest? What is their access to technology? How might they be best able to hear from us? How can we serve them and get them involved with our schools and supporting our community, our school community, and then getting them connected with each other? In the next slide, we talk some about our topics. So we really have targeted goals each season to try to streamline the different ages, interest areas, topics that we're trying to get people interested and engaged. We really incorporate many of the current topics of the day, as you can see there, with our cultural and equity-focused topics, but also the popular fall offerings that most people maybe, you know, think of with community education as well. In fact, right now, tonight, down the hall in the Food and Consumer Sciences classroom, we have the corn tortillas class, and we really try to feature local resources. We bring the community together. We have a parent of two Richfield Public Schools students that is instructing the Authentic Mexican Corn Tortilla class with 12 adults from our community. So just a nice example, and if by chance you get out of here by 8 o'clock, you could maybe get a little taste.
All right, people.
I better talk faster. In community education, our equity work is ongoing. It's a process and a combination of many efforts beyond the topics. About four years ago, when we restarted community education in Richfield, the catalog that was being delivered to the entire district had no Spanish translation at all. There were no bilingual classes offered. There wasn't any mention of assistance or help with other languages. Now, since then, we have offered over 30 bilingual classes. You can see we have a symbol that's listed on the slide there that shows and features and highlights within our catalog which classes are either bilingual or supported with Spanish speakers onsite. And that really is welcoming and highlighting and bringing in a lot more people. We also include just general instructions and, you know, basic information in Spanish and English. And it seems really simple, but it obviously is very time-consuming and costs a lot of extra money to do those things. So we've come a long way in these four years to be really consistent and having that presence. I'd like to highlight Mira, our collaborative partner. It's a local nonprofit that is focused on empowering our Latino community in Richfield and the greater Hennepin area. They are instrumental in really helping us reach and involve more of our Latino community. They are co-located at Central with us, but we serve district-wide. And they assist us with our day-to-day operations, but they also have really helped us to revisit, revise, rethink how we do our work. We're always seeking new ways, new involvement opportunities, how we can reach more of the population that is underserved in our programs, in our out-of-school-time programs, which are year-round. One example, just of an innovative thing we tried recently. We had some funding that was going to be expiring, and we really wanted to try a new effort with our school outreach workers. So our pre-K and elementary outreach workers were given the challenge to find families that could participate in a program of their choice, a free program, that we were able to fund for them. It had to be someone who hasn't been involved before, who hasn't been a part of community education, a non-traditional participant. And in just four days, we had nine brand-new connections, nine children that were participating for free. So it's just a lot of little things that we are putting together to consistently change the structures, not only what we offer, but when, how, where. It's all been making a difference for us, and each year, we've continually increased our participation by people of color. Abby Dubay is going to now speak about our youth and family programs.
Thank you, Carol. This is intimidating. Thank you, Carol, and good evening. I am the Youth Program Coordinator, Events Family Coordinator in Community Education. The following are the successes through creativity and collaboration that helps our youth and family engage in our programming. One favorite part of my job is having the ability to build relationships, listen, and provide fun, interactive, hands-on activities, events, and trips to our diverse families in our community. One successful event is our Disney on Ice Family Field Trip, which has been offered multiple times. This December, we already have registrations for a full bus going to the Xcel Energy Center in St. Paul. This trip is offered in collaboration with Mira, which has helped our Latino families be engaged. Mira has outreach and has resulted in a growth of 38% of our Latino participation since 2019. Richfield Ready is another partner that has helped to break the financial barriers for our youth and to attend our fee-based programming. Since January of this year, Ready has supported 26 community education activities, which in turn allowed 190 students to participate in swim lessons, driver's education, legal robotics, and more. As we say in community education, keep the lights on. We provide after-school, non-school, weekend, and summer programming for all ages in our community in all of our school buildings. Our Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday programming has successfully welcomed families and their children, engaging them with classes and events that help support the learning and filling the gaps. We have had 1,407 in-person participants in our youth and family events since June of 2021. Our students are inspired, empowered with basketball, baseball, soccer, preschool adventures, home alone, babysitting training, and many more courses. I am looking forward to expanding and partnering with our colleagues in the district and community to find innovative ways to support emerging needs related to learning loss and social-emotional skills in our schools and community. Thank you. And I will pass the next few slides on to Dr. Latonya Daniels.
Good evening. I am presenting tonight on behalf of Janelle Bolen, who is our Early Learning Coordinator, but she's out ill. And so I just want to share with you the enrollment numbers of our Early Learning Program and our 3s program. We have 80 students that are enrolled in our inclusive program that includes our general ed as well as our special education students, 188 students in our 4s program, 67 students in our EC... 67 families served in our Early Childhood Family Education Program, and 133 individuals participating overall. Next slide, please. As a program, we are committed to continuing to grow and become better, to become stronger. So one thing that we've done this year is adopted a new curriculum, which is creative curriculum, and our coordinator, as well as our elementary director, Rachel Gens, in partnership with Leadership, in our early learning program are rolling out their curriculum during professional learning communities and during our professional development days. We are also piloting a Spanish enrichment program since over 40% of our families are Latino families. We feel like this is integral to the success and growth of our early learning program. As a part of our literacy grant, the CLSD grant, our teachers are also receiving literacy coaching. We also have a family engagement specialist, and we are also monitoring instruction as we do learning walks as a team to ensure that our students are learning optimally in this program. And in conclusion, we are also continuing our work as an anti-racist program, ensuring that equity work is both personal as well as programmatic. And so teachers are developing personal equity plans to continue their own personal growth that is embedded in PLCs, as well as a part of the coaching cycles, as well as ensuring that the equity policy that we just discussed continues to come to life in the work that we do in the program all the time. And so with that, we will turn it over to you all for any questions.
All right, well, thank you. I'll turn to the left to see if the board members on the left. We'll start with Ms. Malik.
I have no questions, but thank you for all of the information. It's great to see that we're coming back after the drop of numbers in COVID and the challenges of that. I guess I did have one question. Can you give me maybe just a quick idea of what creative curriculum is?
I can't speak directly to the curriculum, but we will follow up with Rachel Gens and Janelle, and they can give you an overview of the curriculum.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Clarkson. Ms. Brackey?
Yeah, I am... This always feels like an area that is so ripe for partnership with the city because of both the adult community ed side of things and then also how are the young people of Richfield doing, right? Like, to what extent are we meeting their needs as a community, whether or not it's through Richfield Public Schools or whether it's through the many other entities that support our young people? So I'm just curious, are there efforts that we are currently doing with the city? And this, to me, feels like a good thing that we could potentially focus on, and I believe is a goal in our strategic plan as well.
Yes, good question. Yes, we do partner with the city. We have many of our non-school day activities for elementary-age youth that are partnered with the city. Together, we offer lifeguard training programming so that we can support both the indoor pool at the middle school and the outdoor pool with the city. We are partnering and discussing, actually, just last week, we had another meeting to discuss adults and the older adult population. The city is also interested in expanding some of their culinary offerings with some of the vendors from the farmer's market, which we are already having a lot of success with culinary offerings for the adult community. So continually meeting with the city personnel and continuing partnerships and tweaking and growing as the needs arise, too.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cole?
She's ready.
She's ready. Nice to meet you. I feel ready. I'd hate to...
Well, thank you for the presentation. And as an ECFE parent, I just wanted to express gratitude. I think society has this expectation that when people have children, they know what to do from birth to three. And I just remember being in the hospital and being like, let me be clear, I do not know what to do. Like, let me record the steps for giving her a bath. Let me... Like, just no idea. And we were still looking forward to ECFE, and COVID kind of took that from us. So being able to be part of that community now is just so important because I felt like I sort of lost that village that I was hoping for during COVID, and now I feel like I have it with the ECFE community. It's just so incredible. There's so much care. It feels safe. That's been hard to find in COVID times, like an environment that feels safe to bring an unvaccinated child to. So I just... Her development and growth, and she's just thriving. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Wonderful. Thanks for participating.
Mr. Tensing?
I don't know if I can top that. I don't have anything to add, so thank you.
I can support the idea that Ms. Smiesek's child is thriving. The delight of the entire neighborhood. Ms. Cole?
My child will never call that. So you and I are going to talk about it.
Okay, okay. Sounds fair.
So I am just really... Thank you for the presentation. I have to say, I look forward to the catalog every time. Last session, I signed up for yoga. I signed up for, like, kitchen remodel or bath. I can't remember. It was fun. It's so great. It's such a welcoming space. I feel like I can just walk in and, like, talk to people, whoever is there. And I see a lot of families doing the same. I think that is an understanding of what the office is to the community. So thank you for that. And I've seen all of this develop in the last, you know, four to five years. And it's great to see, and I look forward to seeing what's next.
Thank you. And we'll ask the students if they have questions or comments. Elsie, questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I just really want to say thank you also for being inclusive of Spanish speakers and putting, like, a little symbol. Because when I was younger, I was like, oh, like, are they going to be, like, Spanish speakers? Because my parents only speak... Well, now they speak more English, but they used to not speak any English. And for me, I'm like, oh, can I go to this? And they're like, oh, I don't know what this says. And I had, like, such a struggle. I'm like, oh, I want to do this, but they're like, oh, no, because there's not going to be someone or understand what the activity was. So I think that's really cool, adding, like, the bilingual, that there's going to be someone that's going to be helping or just someone with Spanish speaking. So thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. Helen, questions or comments?
Yeah, so thank you for the presentation. I don't have any comments, but I also do look forward to the catalog. And even if I don't end up signing up for, per se, any of the classes that season, it's great to see such a wide variety of classes offered and just to know that we have these options available if, you know, any of them interest me or my family members. And yeah, I enjoy it. Thank you.
Corinna, questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, but I love how inclusive the program is and how much support you guys offer to families. So it's really great what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing but echoes for some of the comments at just how inclusive the program is, that, you know, this is our most wide-in-scope program, right? As a district, it goes from birth till death. So it hits every age in between, which is pretty impressive. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, presentation two. At our last meeting, we introduced for a first read Policy 601. There was a number of questions. And so rather than just present it in the traditional way, we actually added it to the superintendent report to talk a little bit more about Policy 601. And just as a reminder, we actually looked at this last year for possible updates, got feedback from Safe and Supportive Schools. This is a second read coming to you tonight in the old business section. But as a reminder, we're also not expecting any movement today. This is just reminding us and sort of going into some of those details that we were asked about at our last meeting. And we hope to recommend things for a third read and possibly for passage on November 22nd. That'll depend on feedback we anticipate coming from Safe and Supportive Schools on the 17th. And then some ongoing feedback we have from the leadership teams at the high school to make sure that that's aligned. Otherwise, we might push back passage until December. We broke things into minor updates and major changes. And so minor updates are just updating in terms of the current realities, like some of the language suggested that performing arts is offered at all of our schools. That's not actually factual, so we wanted to make sure that it mentioned that we do actually have music classes at all of our schools. We updated wording to align with our equity policy and then also added section on reading in grade three to align to current state statutes, World's Best Workforce and the Minnesota School Boards Association Model Policy. And then we also replaced the graduation requirements based on a board recommendation with just a reference to the actual policies so as not to be repetitive and have to update both policies at the same time in the future. We also continue to work our way through grading to reflect language, to align to what grading has been happening over the past years, and our ongoing work and work moving forward to align to standards-based grading. Just a reminder, as we think from an equity perspective, grades are about communicating what students learn. They shouldn't be subjective or non-academic, and they should be very transparent, communicated to students in advance in the syllabus and also in multiple ways through our instructors in their classrooms. So to try to clarify, current practices continue for ninth through 12th graders. So this is not actually impacting anyone in our current high school. We went back and forth on this as we continued to gather information. But students entering ninth grade, and at our last meeting, we were intending to begin with ninth grade, but those students have actually gone through nine weeks already and are a full quarter in anticipating that they're going to be going under one system. So we decided that new practices starting, we'll start with this current year's eighth graders. And so this would be something that would begin. And this is actually something we've done with all of our policies typically as we start them in the fall, full implementation the year after. And so that is what we were proposing along with this. And so we would continue calculating GPA and class rank for the people currently in our high school and then changing things for the future, removing that A-plus 4.33. And we found that we were one of the only schools we could find that actually had a 4.33 for an A-plus, changing what other schools and other districts had done. And then also not assigning class rank and hearing feedback that that was something from a competitive perspective. So some of the reasons behind that, they are generally outdated practices other districts have moved away from. 4.0 actually simplifies, as we heard at our last meeting. Students transferring in might find themselves using a more common grade point average and be at a disadvantage even though the academic achievement is the same or even higher. College admissions officers actually break down each transcript, looking at... And I've met with counselors at actually several schools. They actually look at the classes that are offered by school, the level of challenge a student offered by school, and then also the grades within those classes. And so it's much more complex than the typical grade, grade point average, and weighting. There's a very in-depth look that occurs at transcripts from this point forward. And then it also aligns to our equity policy because right now, we are weighting certain classes that are on a college pathway as higher than those on a career pathway. And that's not something that we overall value. And we want to create that value message to all of our students. And then also getting that feedback around class rank and the unnecessary stress and competition that that can create. So again, we are not presenting this for you tonight, but this hopefully answers some of the questions we had at our last board meeting. The process from here forward is there is a Safe and Supportive Adult Meeting, a Safe and Supportive Student Meeting, and then also a BILT, which is the Building Instructional Leadership Team Meeting at the high school, and a Building Operational Leadership Team Meeting at the high school. And this will go through all of them before, coming back here, and we'll see where that lands. Hopefully, we'll have it on the 22nd, and if not, we'll have it in December. So with that, I am hoping I answered board questions from last meeting, and I will pause and see.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to questions and comments from the board. I'll start with Ms. Cole.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Tensing?
Just wanted to express gratitude for the work that's been done looking at the grading. And I appreciate the intentionality with which we're revising that entire system to be more aligned with, you know, I can't think what's going to work for our student quality, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Smiesek?
I think it looks great, thanks to all that contributed.
Ms. Malik?
Yep, same. It looks... It looks really good. I know this has been an ongoing conversation, so I really appreciate that we are at this point and ready to make those changes. So thank you.
Ms. Brackey?
Yes, echo all that. I especially love the slide that has the two grading models side by side. I think it's really helpful to see that comparison. And I personally fully support the shift and how it is being planned and the reasons why. My question is, beyond the committees that you just named that are going to be talking about this, are there going to be any other aspects of public outreach? Students, staff, families? And I'm like, both mindful as I say that, that like, I don't want to feel like we are saying we're interested in all of this outreach if, in fact, we're all fairly committed, that we think that this is the right thing to do. And I also want to make sure that there's not a level of shock, that all of a sudden, this is a change that is happening that I think probably would affect some people in some pretty significant ways or could bring about some strong feeling. So I will say, I'm personally a little bit torn about what I actually think is the right approach to do here, but my question is, how are you and your team thinking about that?
So, and Dr. Clarkson is stepping to the microphone. So we did a reasonable amount of information gathering in regard to this prior to COVID hitting. And Dr. Clarkson?
We are bringing it back to both Safe and Supportive Schools, community and student, and we can also bring it to the high school for the student government as another outreach. But that was our plan moving forward.
We certainly could look at gathering more input or more feedback. We also can and would be planning on a large amount of communication, particularly to eighth graders, because this would be impacting those in middle school as they move themselves forward. Dr. Daniels?
We also talked about the purpose of us rolling it out next year is so during registration in open houses, we could have that conversation with parents, so it's not shocking. And so it's informing. And so doing that more strategically versus trying to embed this and implement this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you. Corinna, questions or comments?
I personally really like the second model because I know, like, a lot of students really do compare their class rank, and it can make other people feel bad when they're like not number one and it can make other people feel bad when they're like not number one or in the top 10, in the top 10%. And I'd also say a lot of like college applications require you to put like your weighted GPA, and that's a 4.0, instead of like putting like a 4.5. You really cannot put over a 4.0. So I think it'll be very effective and make students like feel less loaded on their grades and whatnot.
Thank you. Helen, questions, comments?
No questions. I guess I can certainly attest that taking away the option of an A plus definitely takes a lot of the edge and pressure off of that space of where there's a lot more room to earn an A. I think there definitely is a lot of pressure to, you know, kind of get that peak, peak three, you know, three or four percent, which is, you know, very difficult to do. So it definitely takes a lot of edge off of that, which is nice.
Elsie, questions, comments?
Okay, yeah, I just want to like, yeah, I really agree with what Helen and Corinna said, and yeah.
Right, my comments would echo a lot of what was already said, but also, you know, there are aspects of it where when we added the weights to the classes, we are conveying a message, whether we intend to or not, that for whatever reason, the building values these classes more than others. And it might be that, you know, me taking a language would be a bigger stretch than taking AP math, right? So it's interesting that I could get rewarded just for what I'm already good at and other things. So there are aspects of it that I don't necessarily think the message matched our intent, and so I'm glad to see this sunset. I think we first talked about this probably in our first three months on the board eight years ago with Christine and Peter. And so this has been a long time developing. And so I'm happy to see it. You know, what I realized eight years ago was when people come to us and say they think that the absence of class rank will harm our students, like Eden Prairie High School has not had class rank since before then. They were one of the ones eight years ago that no longer had class rank. And I'm pretty sure that if it was harming the students of Eden Prairie High School, we'd have heard about it in the paper. So it's not harming them at all. And so there's about 10, maybe, you know, a handful or two of students, Corinna, who, for whom it really, they like the idea of class rank. They could, those students are so blessed academically, they could figure out their relative rank to each other in the cafeteria probably in about 10 minutes. And so we don't need to have everyone else participate in it, you know, willfully, so, or against the will even. So that's nice. I appreciate the simplicity of it. The, I did know, I do know, like as students move to high school, there are instances, right, where students who are currently in eighth grade will eventually be in classes with those who are in ninth, 10th, or 11th. And so someone will be eligible for an A plus or perhaps even a multiplier, and the other student will not. And so that's something that we just have to get our arms around and make sure we communicate. You could theoretically add an A plus, also worth 4.0. It's just a thing, right? So you could reward someone for getting the last two or three percent, but it doesn't convey anything in grade point average. So anyway, I'm excited for it and I appreciate it, and I appreciate the explanation tonight. Any other final words or comments on this before we move forward?
Can I just add, just hearing from our students in this room, it is so helpful to realize how much pressure that's actually putting on you. You kind of know that it would, but the fact that you guys are saying, you sound relieved and the fact that it's not even going to affect you, you guys are all past it. But I think it's just such an important thing to recognize that it, unknowingly, we were really adding a lot of unnecessary pressure to students' day-to-day lives that wasn't helping anybody anywhere. So I really appreciate hearing you guys' perspective on that.
All right. Well, thank you. And with that, that concludes the superintendent update. We have one more item on information and proposals, not action, and that is a commendation.
Yes, and this comes to us from Jana Roden, a high school teacher. Would like to commend staff member Sarah Olson, Stacy Thine Collins, Dr. Alicia Mobley, and Marissa Zimmerman for their care and respect for their RPS colleagues. Received the following email, "Everyone has me up in my feelings this week, so I need to give some shout-outs. It's been a hard one for me. A student made a bad choice, and we had to watch the fallout. I'm sad for the student and their family, but thankful we can get them help. The team here is compassionate enough to realize I'm questioning myself as well. As of now, four of my colleagues have reached out to me to make sure I'm okay. Stacy, Sarah, Alicia, and Marissa, I can't tell you how much it means to me. I needed it. Thank you for making me feel so supported and valued. These are the leaders that help us show up every day. I wanted to brag to the school board about how supported I felt. They need to hear the good things. Thanks, everyone. Jana." So commendation out to our staff members, and thanks, Jana, for sharing some of the great camaraderie and teamwork that goes on in Richfield Public Schools.
All right, thank you. It's nice to hear, although it seems to have come from a challenging situation. So thank you to Jana for sharing with us, and thank you to those staff members. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is the basket of relatively routine items. We consent to pass without discussion. If anyone would like to move something from the consent agenda for actual discussion, please let me know. Otherwise, we can entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Smitschek and a second by Ms. Baraki. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. We move now to old business, old Policy 706, the acceptance of gifts.
All right, read two, acceptance of gifts. And again, just a very small change in terms of wording. This is about how we as a district accept gifts and that we only do it in compliance with state law. So minor changes, nothing significant. We plan to bring this back to you at our next meeting with a recommendation for passage.
All right. I'll look to my right and just in bulk to see if anyone has questions or comments about the updates to Policy 706. And to my left, no questions or comments, students? All right. Well, as a second read, if anyone has anything they need to share with the administration, please do so via email between now and the next meeting. Otherwise, with this level of feedback, I imagine it will come to us for a third read and voting at the next opportunity. All right. That brings us to Policy 601, academic standards and instructional curriculum, a second read.
Yes, and I won't go into this in depth because I already presented about it. But just as a reminder, this one may or may not be here on the 22nd as we bring it to Safe and Supportive Schools, students and adults, bring it to the student government, and then also to the BILT team at the high school, just double checking and gathering those last pieces of information.
All right. So while we, thank you, superintendent. While we did agree with the theme of the prior presentation, this one has a lot more detail. And so I just want to make sure we take the time, if anyone has questions or specifics, click to the left. Ms. Baraki, no. Ms. Malik?
Nope.
Ms. Smitschek? No, okay. Mr. Tensing?
I'm good.
You're good. Ms. Cole? Helen, questions, comments on the actual words that are backing the prior presentation? Policy 601, no. Elsie? Corinna? All right, I'm in the same boat. So if we, again, as a second read, if anyone has questions or comments, please share them. Otherwise, we'll see how this fares with the Safe and Supportive Schools group as well as other avenues of feedback we'll get. It might come up at the next meeting, or it might take some time, depending on how it does there. Okay, super. That brings us to new business. The first item of new business is a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
All right, and so this is one of the steps to make things official. Obviously, we had an election last week, and it is our responsibility to review the overall votes and canvas, which basically means that you are accepting these results as valid. And this is the second to final step required to seat new board members. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Paulus, for a board resolution.
All right, so just for those who aren't flipping through, it has a summary of all the vote totals. We have three candidates, named candidates for three spots. Rachel Banks Cupcho was the winner with the most votes. Second was Eric Carter, and myself, Tim Paulus, was third. A streak that continues. Anyway, with that, we will, we can move the resolution or entertain discussion on it if anyone has questions or comments about the materials that are presented.
I will move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Baraki and a second by Ms. Malik. Any final questions or comments before I pull the board? All right, Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Malik?
Aye.
Ms. Smitschek?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution is passed. Excellent. Next item, seems very similar, is a resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties.
Correct. So the first resolution was around the votes and vote totals. This is around allowing Ms. Quam to issue certificates that suggest that Mr. Paulus has been elected, Rachel Banks Cupcho has been elected, and Eric Carter has been elected. It also allows her to act as clerk to finalize each of these components and move forward with the oath of office for our new board members, which is required as they, prior to being fully seated and installed as of January 3rd. So this is another one that goes forward with a resolution.
All right. So this is yet another of the very formal steps. If anyone has any discussion or comments they'd like to share, please do so. Otherwise, we can entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any final discussion? All right, I will pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Smitschek?
Aye.
Ms. Malik?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution is passed. All right, next up on new business, assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination.
All right, and so you have here our state form that is prepared by Mr. Holgy in the HR and Legal Department, asking the board to approve the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. Essentially, we have a human rights coordinator and a Title IX coordinator. Both of those are Mr. Holgy and a 504 coordinator, Mary Clarkson. And those two individuals are responsible for overseeing all training and all supports to make sure that we are in compliance with all of these requirements. So with that, I present that to you tonight.
All right, well, thank you. I think I say this every year, I'm thrilled to vote on compliance with a legal requirement. That's good. But if you think of the downside of that, there are districts out there that are willfully not perhaps in compliance. And so there we go. Does anyone have any comments or substantive discussion on this one? I'm happy to say that I view this as a checkbox exercise for us and not one that generates controversy of any kind. So with that, we can entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve the item assuring state compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination.
I'll second.
I believe that is consistent with our overall strategies.
All right.
Sorry, I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any final discussion? All right, I will, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The chair votes aye, and we have assured compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination. Excellent. We move now to Policy 452, evaluation and development of professional staff and administrative guidelines 452.1.
And this is a first read, and so just reintroducing ourselves to the evaluation and development of professional staff. And so this is a policy that describes that we will evaluate all of our staff members, and we will also provide professional development. It also talks about observations will be part of this process, overall evaluation of probationary staff. It also talks about the overall procedures. So this is something that you will see some changes in as we bring it in for a second read because this one has not been reviewed in the last eight years. And so you should assume that there will be some changes. And so we have this before you tonight for a first read. And so we can also take input tonight or over email in the coming weeks.
All right. So thank you for that. Yeah, so as a first read, again, our usual pattern is if anyone has anything substantive that they want to share now, that's great. Otherwise, if you have editorial comments or whatever, please share those directly with the administration. We can wait and see what the first run-through and edit looks like also at our second read. Any last call of questions or comments?
I was just gonna share my surprise that the policy hasn't been updated since 2014, and the guideline looks like it has not been updated since 2004. And so I am looking forward to the updates that we feel like reflect our current approach and the way that we want to do this as a district.
The guideline was reviewed, I think it said, also in?
Reviewed, but not revised.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We were efficient back then.
I have a question. In lieu of these timelines, I do know that a lot of things have been happening with professional development, PRCs. So how is that, how are those things that are happening tied into this policy?
Right, in the ensuing eight years, some things have happened, and how do they interact with this?
Because I can surprise like with the year, but at the same time, I know what I see that, like a lot of what happened even in the last four years has been like a very intentional approach to excellence in, you know, curriculum delivery and all of those things. So then I'm like wondering.
So we haven't always been as speedy in updating our policies as we have been. As Ms. Quam has been really pushing us to get on to the five-year cycle, we haven't been as speedy in updating our policies as our work. And so, for example, the equity training that's been implemented across the district, the Danielson teacher evaluation and some of those methodologies, and some of the things that we have collaboratively agreed to with Ed Richfield in our Q comp and our MOA team aren't reflected in here, while they are reflected in our practice. And so sometimes our policies are lagging in the practices, even though we report, for example, to the board the professional development and staff development we do. It may not be fully updated philosophically yet in the policies. And so it's an area where we are working to improve. And as we think about board goals, we could also talk about continuing to accelerate that policy review to make sure it always is in alignment with our practices.
And for the record, I rather that it's done in practice than it is about the paper train. But I just felt it important to recognize that the teachers and the staff are doing a really incredible job, and especially even teacher ownership to lead on some of these trainings and, you know, very innovative approaches happening, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess it highlights we can be better than what the policy states, right? The policy set up a, we will be no worse than. It is one view that we don't really highlight that exact wording. But so that we have improved in how we've done things in this, the eight-year gap on this one. Are there many more that have such a gap, Cassandra?
Not too many more.
Not too many more, okay, great. Okay, so that one will come back to us again. If you have questions or comments, please share them with the administration. Otherwise, we can wait and see how it's marked up at the next meeting. That brings us to donations.
Yes, we have a long list of donations. And so I'm going to provide a little explanation before I launch into all the instrument donations for Richfield Middle School. Second-year Richfield Middle School band director Cory Needleman, an innovative and impressive musician, has been widely expanding the breadth and participation in our Richfield Middle School band, meaning we have needed significant more instruments. We, as a district, have the budget and finances to provide said instruments. However, Mr. Needleman feels it is very important to be asking our community if they have instruments lying around and if there are things that people would like to donate. And so I felt a little uncomfortable with Mr. Needleman going out to the community and asking, and he assured me that districts all around the metro do this, and this is very commonplace. It is not a function of us as a district not valuing music or investing in instruments. This is a way of our community supporting with often instruments that are lying around in homes, waiting for a middle school band director to ask for them to go out and get that community participation. So it's a very exciting thing for me to report to you about the large expansion of the middle school band and the innovative resourcefulness, and that was the word I was looking for, of Mr. Needleman. And so due to his efforts amongst the many band instruments that we are working to also purchase, the Richfield Middle School Music Department received the following donations. A cornet valued at $200 and a flute valued at $150 from Nicholas Godette of Minneapolis. A flute valued at $95 from Jeffrey Dunets of Minneapolis. A flute valued at $100 from Pam Shield of Richfield. A flute valued at $125, a flute valued at $225, and a trumpet valued at $200 from Chad Speck of Minneapolis. A flute valued at $250 from Shelley Parker of St. Paul. A flute valued at $700 from Leslie Earls, band director at Edison High School. A trumpet valued at $400 from Kirk Spencer of Richfield. A trumpet valued at $450 from Alex Berry of Minneapolis. A trumpet valued at $500 from Steve Kelly of New Hope. A trumpet valued at $250 from Dave Graff of Shorewood. A trumpet valued at $200 from Benji Conklin of Minneapolis. A trumpet valued at $150 from Tanner Reed of Richfield. A trumpet valued at $450 from Kate Weicher of Richfield. a trumpet valued at $450 from Kate Wyker of Richfield; a trumpet valued at $300 from Kristy Sink of Edina; a flute valued at $400; a flute valued at $250; a flute valued at $750; a trumpet valued at $75; and a clarinet valued at $250 from anonymous donors. So thank you to our extremely generous donors to the Richfield Middle School Music Department. The RPS General Fund received donations of $25 from Michelle Burnside of Richfield, and $10 from Lisa Ferrari of Freehold, New Jersey; and the RPS Special Ed Program at South Education Center received a donation of $20 from Sarah Barrett of Eagan, Minnesota. Thank you to our generous donors across the metro.
All right. Well, that was an extensive list. Thank you to the generosity of everyone on the list, and I appreciated the explanation on the practice among band departments. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to share? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to accept with gratitude.
This made me so happy. Thank you for the joy. Thank you to all who donated.
I'll move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Ms. Smiesek. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. Excellent. We move on now to advanced planning. The first item is a legislative update.
Actually, I missed AMSD this past Friday, so I don't have anything to really report.
So there is a draft legislative platform from AMSD, which will become official in a month, and so as a legislative update, we are going to begin reviewing the AMSD platform and sharing with the board that platform, and then beginning to have a conversation as a group here about what our legislative top priorities are. This is, the legislature typically meets beginning in January on a budget year, this is not a budget year, so they typically begin meeting in March, in a policy-based year. So we anticipate setting up a study session, most likely the first meeting in February, but we are planning to reach out to our elected officials to see what works best for them, and set up a study session. And so what that means is, we will work on our legislative platform, or what are the top priorities of this group, and we will then be able to share that prior to the legislative session beginning with our elected officials.
All right. Well, with that, as a legislative update, we'll move now to information and questions from the board. I'm going to start just on the heels of the legislative update. I was invited, along with some of the administration, to a December 9th City of Richfield Legislative Breakfast, so they're having their, the city government is having their study session like we would have with the local legislators, to present what their city platform or wish list might be. So that's December 9th. I will, if for some reason I can't make it, I'll reach out to see if Ms. Cole can make it, or someone else in one of us, you know, to make sure that we're represented.
I was invited as it, so I will.
Okay, super. So with that, I'll move to other board members to see if they have any information or questions to share. Ms. Baraki?
No.
Ms. Malik?
No, thank you.
Ms. Smiesek? Mr. Tensing?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Cole?
No questions.
Helen?
No.
Corinna?
No.
Elsie?
No.
All right. I have none, I've already shared mine, so that's great. That brings us to future meeting dates. Our next meeting is November 22nd, two weeks from tonight, 7:00 PM, here in the boardroom. That is a meeting with public comment, and those wishing to present public comments should sign up in accordance with the policies that we have posted. Following that, the subsequent meeting is December 6th, 7:00 PM. That is a regular board meeting that is also serving as our annual truth and taxation meeting, so this is part of the public notice that we have our truth and taxation meeting, and that is a meeting to the truth and taxation that does invite public comment as well, even though it is, the public comment is specific to the truth and taxation session. So, does anyone have any suggested future agenda items? I'll just make this one open. Big call to the right? No, future agenda items? No? All right, I have none either. We always seem to fill it, even without these nuggets that we would bring forth only now, so.
I have a comment, though.
Oh, yes?
The promise of the cooking worked. We are going to...
You have five minutes to get down the hall, Paul.
We have...
That's correct.
Just saying.
With that, as encouragement, it is now 7:55 PM, and I will adjourn this meeting of the Richfield School Board. Have a good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Through the door, through the cafeteria, and then straight left and right.